Counselor Hill, would you read us out of closed session, please?
Yes, I move the city council members certified by a recorded vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, thank you, that carries. Next up, I called a six thirty regular meeting to order. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mayor Walker.
Present.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Here.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Snook.
Yeah, here.
Thank you. Next up, we have, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Are there any announcements, councilors?
Congratulations to the city staff on winning three environmental awards for sustainability. A public announcement just came out, wow. To pass on congratulations to hard work, well done.
Congratulations. The other, all right. Next up, we have recognitions and proclamations. Are there any other sides? All right. So I have three items. So the city. The city of Charlottesville has received a commendable set of recognitions for its work towards its green city vision during 2020, a year filled with challenges that have demanded persistence, dedication, and performance. In July, the city announced, was announced as a winner of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Better Business Challenge hosted by a local, the local nonprofit C3. This year, competition included seventy-five area businesses, nonprofits, and schools who took actions to reduce their environmental impacts. In August, Charlottesville was approved as a DEQ, Virginia Environmental Excellence Program, Veep Sustainability Partner for the ninth consecutive year. The Veep Sustainability Partner track is designed to encourage organizations across Virginia to make environmental sustainability part of their culture through leadership, innovation, and continual improvement. Organizations must demonstrate this this commitment through measurable and verifiable conservation efforts, leading to direct and indirect improvements in energy usage, water usage, waste generation, generation, and other environmental benefits. In September, the city of Charlottesville was elected, selected as the twenty twenty-one EPA WaterSense Program Sustained Excellence Award winner. This is the fourth time the city has achieved this award level and the seventh year of receiving awards through this program. WaterSense partners contribute to the program's success by enhancing the market for water-efficient products, practices, and services. We remain committed to continued progress and work and appreciate the organizations and community support. So again, congratulations. All right, any other? All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda. One, minutes, September seventh, closed and regular meetings. September fifteenth, joint school reconfiguration meeting. September twenty-first, council quorum at the planning commission work session. Number two, resolution appropriating funds for the Charlottesville Victim Witness Assistance Grant. Two hundred fifty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars, second reading. Three, resolution appropriating funding award for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Employment and Training, SNAP ENT. One hundred twelve thousand, seven hundred eight dollars, second reading. Four, resolution appropriating General Assembly one-time bonus funding for the city sheriff's office. Thirty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars, first of two readings. Five, resolution appropriating fiscal year twenty twenty-two fire programs. Aid to locality funding, Fire Fund, one hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars, first of two readings.
All right, thank you. Mr. Willer, I turn it over to you to see if there are members of the public who would like to speak on items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you'd like to address council, please click the raise hand icon. Again, this is not Community Matters, it's just for items on the consent agenda. From via telephone, you can press star nine. And each speaker will get up to three minutes. Mayor Walker, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mayor Walker, there's actually one amendment that needs to be made to the resolution concerning the city sheriff's office. Can I suggest that amendment right now? I conferred with Sheriff Brown about this.
Yes.
Okay, on page thirty-one of the packet where the resolution appears in the second whereas paragraph, and just so you'll understand, the sheriff's office tells me that this proposal wound up getting changed, but not quite perfectly changed between a couple of different iterations. So it should read, whereas the Charlottesville Sheriff's Office has a total of eleven sworn positions that meet qualification for the one-time three thousand dollar bonus. Seven are funded with compensation board funds and four are fully funded by the city. And then who also qualify for the three thousand dollar bonus. It says twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars in city funds will be used to cover. And then the missing words are the four otherwise approved deputies, to be fair and equitable for sworn members. So if we could make those changes, that would, according to Sheriff Brown, would would get us where we need to go.
All right.
I'll accept that amendment to my motion.
Thank you.
I will continue to second.
And any further questions or comments? And my comment here is just, you know, what an HR leader. This is definitely one of those areas that we have needed to consistently look at the sheriff's office. They've been requesting increases, or at least there have been discussions of it, and they haven't received it. And because of the way the pay is allocated and the state's funding of some of those, and this has come up twice, I think this year with the jail too, where some employees are comp board and others are not. And so how do you make it fair and equitable? And we just had to set our last meeting. And so we should do as much as we can as a city to make sure that you know, that we are doing the best that we can with making sure that their employees are taken care of also. And along with the conversation around equity, and I'm going to bring this up later when we discuss the allocations for the American Rescue funding, but, and I spoke with the city manager and I sent the email today. I'm sorry, it wasn't a detailed email, but on Friday about, we gave a one bonus to employees. And at that time, I didn't think that that was sufficient, but it was better than nothing. But as employees hear and see and read in the news and newspapers that there are pockets of employees getting bonuses that we do want to look at this and make this, I think, a priority for how we spend that funding. And since we have pockets of money set aside, and I know there's a lot to do with it, but the challenges that have, that staff have had to, you know, endure with navigating COVID, it should just be right up there with making sure that the most vulnerable members of the community are taken care of. So I'm going to bring that up again later, but those are my comments with regarding that.
I certainly agree, that's to be one of our priorities.
Okay, no further, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
I see, I didn't know, I see the Sheriff Brown is on here. Did you have any comments? You've already voted, but sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, as it stated, it's, it's, it's coming from the state. And so we're just trying to make sure that it's something that can be applied to the rest of the sworn deputies as well. And again, we went through this with the jail last week, because it's also covering regional jails. So no, we're just trying to make sure that everybody is on the same level with that.
But there are still some pay discrepancies, I guess, that need to be taken care of within your department, too.
Yes, yes, very much so. We were actually able to, the starting, it's kind of a compression issue. We were able to get the starting pay somewhat adjusted last summer, but it didn't affect the pay for people that have been here for years. And that's where it's, you know, very, very close in regards to compensation. That's where we're trying to get adjustments made. And we had not been part of studies for numerous years. So we weren't giving adjustment, we weren't given adjustments because we weren't part of the market studies. And it's just stayed that way for quite some time.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
All right. Okay, so next up. Is there a response? For, for matters from the public or councilors? Okay. Next up, we have the Community Matters. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Willer. It looks like we have five people signed up.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, one of those did drop out. But if you want to get in line, please click the raise hand icon. Each person will get up to three minutes to address council on any topic. The people we have signed up in advance are Lori Shirk, who I do not see in the webinar, but we do have another Lori who's raising their hand. Myra Anderson, I do not see, and then Jean Hyatt. We're going to start with the Lori who has their hand raised and see if this is the person that signed up in advance. Welcome to the meeting, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
And did you sign up in advance on the topic of community safety?
Did.
Great, you've got three minutes, go ahead, tell us your name.
My name is Lori Shirk, and I signed up to speak today, the morning after the last meeting, because I was so upset after being verbally assaulted for my comments concerning the amount of gunfire and other violent crime occurring where UVA students live and learn. Never in a million years would I imagine that thanking the heads of the two agencies responsible for safety of its residents and their timely professional collaboration, which has now led to a month-long reprieve in gunfire, would be met by such contempt and disrespect by Mayor Walker, as if quoting Kendi is somehow an equivalent substitution for the absence of basic decorum, dignity, and respect towards constituents and colleagues. This is a public square, and it's supposed to be a safe place where stakeholders can speak to the issues of the day, to their elected officials. It's the foundation of representative democracy, most especially at the local level. Sadly, here in Charlottesville, a hostile environment exists where malice and bigotry is perceived in everything that is said and done, and the gotcha-ism has become the new form of governing. And the goal is not merely to punish the person who's been ensnared. The goal is to send a message loud and clear to everyone else. Step out of line and you're next. The result is that good people, dedicated people, qualified people in this city, disengage from the process altogether, as evidenced most recently with the premature departure of city manager Boils and Major Mooney, and over a dozen other city leaders in less than two years. Because the need to feel safe trumps the need to speak truth. The city is now paralyzed, brought to her knees, not because of some noble effort to burn it down and build it back up, but because persuasion, the purpose of argument has been replaced with public shaming. Facts are replaced with feelings, ideas are replaced with identity, forgiveness is replaced with punishment, debate is replaced with canceling, and diversity is replaced with homogeneous thought, inclusion with exclusion. Speaking the truth in this city comes with a cost. And my hope is that Acting Police Chief Major Duret can muster the courage to stand up to the oppressive environment that currently exists in Charlottesville government. Courage to speak up about the myriad of issues that have gutted an agency's ability to ensure that basic human right of community safety exists. During this pandemic of fear in city government, I'm proud to be one of those willing to speak truth to power. And for those other UVA mothers willing to do the same, because courage can also be contagious. And our example may very well serve as a means of transmission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker who signed up in advance is Marcy Garcia. Marcy, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Marcy Garcia, and I am a UVA parent. My husband and I have lived in Virginia most of our lives, and for the record, I am also Hispanic. I mention this because of references made at the last city council meeting referring to UVA students as rich white kids. My husband and I both work for a living, and our family is neither rich nor white, and I am not here to take sides. I'm here for one reason only, and that is to advocate for the safety of the Charlottesville community. My child is part of this community. For the last few years, she loved living in Charlottesville, Charlottesville until the spring when the gunshots started. Then in August and September, there were more shots. My daughter would call me saying, Mom, I hear gunshots. I am here in my apartment and I hear gunshots nearby. I received these calls several times in the course of two months. She was scared to walk alone and go out at night. Most of you here have children, how would you feel if you got these calls from your child to feel helpless and not know how to comfort them? She's only one of a young, she's only one of the few people in UVA in Charlottesville who fear for their safety. A few weeks ago, her friends were at the Kung Fu Tea when the Pizza Hut shooting happened. This happened in broad daylight. This isn't just something that we can ignore anymore. No one wants their child or family member to come home in a wooden box. And every parent, regardless of whether you're white, black, or brown, or regardless of what your nationality, gender, or creed is, every parent has every right to be concerned for their children's safety. Stray bullets are colorblind. I'm here with two asks. First is that the city council consider, continue to support the efforts of the police around public safety as well as their initiatives. And the second is that Charlottesville Police and the University Police continue their collaboration in ensuring the safety of the communities that they serve. They are severely understaffed, and we thank them for their efforts, and we hope that they will continue in their efforts to keep Charlottesville safe. Thank you, and give it, good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, our number three speaker withdrew. And number four is Myra Anderson, who I do not see on the webinar, but I'll keep watching. And so next, we will go to Jean Hyatt, who's the last of our speakers to sign up in advance. Jean, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Jean Hyatt, and I live at Metta Brook Heights Road. Good evening, Mayor Walker and councilors, thank you for your time and effort in your work on city councils during these challenging times. I have a few concerns to share. I see the city is maintaining a pedestrian mall with beautiful plantings and regular maintenance of trash and removal of litter, and that is great. My concern is that there is a problem with considerable litter on the side streets as you enter the mall that is not often dealt with. So as workers, residents, visitors walk to and from the mall, the litter on the side streets is less than great. Perhaps city maintenance people could extend their care of the mall to include one block out on these side streets. My other concerns are in the Rose Hill and Kellytown neighborhoods. As commercial development on Preston and Rose Hill has significantly increased, and with the expansion of the school population at Burley, there are many more cars on Rose Hill. It often feels scary and a little dangerous for pedestrians crossing Rose Hill. My suggestion is that the speed limit be reduced to twenty-five miles per hour instead of thirty-five, and that a four-way stop is placed at some intersection along Rose Hill Drive. I would note that Rose Hill from its intersection with Rugby Avenue Avenue is reduced to twenty-five miles per hour as it goes north to Walker School. And Rugby Avenue's speed limit was reduced from thirty-five to twenty-five miles per hour several years ago. The speed limit on Rose Hill during arrival and dismissal time near Burley Middle School is reduced to twenty-five miles per hour at better speed. However, at other schools like Greenbrier Elementary, the speed limit is reduced to fifteen miles per hour. Finally, I ask you to drive over to see the site of an oversized building being constructed on the corner of Rose Hill and Amherst. The neighborhood tried unsuccessfully for several years to get the city to modify the size of this proposed building. It is allowed by the B1 zoning as well as a special use permit. There are many concerns about this structure, but one is that it's situated too close to the backyard lot lines of the neighbors' homes. Please walk over behind the building to see how close it is to those backyards. It gives us a sorry example of the importance of transition zones and step backs between different types of zoning districts. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
So we have thirteen slots remaining for the public, and we have three hands raised right now. If you'd like to get in line, please click the raise hand icon. Our next speaker is Katrina Turner, who will be followed by Robin Hoffman. Katrina, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
That's good evening, Katrina Turner. First of all, I just want to speak again to the parents of UVA. I would like to ask them, how long are your children going to be in this community? Because see, you want things to change with the police. While your children are going to UVA for three, four, five, however many years that they go, then when they leave the community, see, the police are going to be doing what they always do to our community. Do you want your children safe for three, four years? We want our children safe too, and this is what we've been asking for, but have we gotten it? No, but as soon as somebody from UVA speaks up, oh, now we're going to get things done. No, I don't care what color you are, we all need to be protected. Now, real quick, I want to read this statement. You guys really thought a white, trans woman, an Egyptian, and a Hispanic guy were the best qualified to be executive director over this black community over a black native with excellent qualifications? Now, this email came from Bellamy Brown, the chair of the PCRB. And this is talking about the other applicant for the executive director, and he's talking to Heather Hill. So I'd like to know how an applicant for this job is talking to a city counselor, this is so disrespectful for him to talk about an Egyptian, a Hispanic, and a white, trans woman? The majority of my great nieces and nephews are Hispanic, mixed with Hispanic. I have many lesbian gay people in my family. For the chair of the CRB to write something like this to a city council member in disrespect, all of those applicants like that does not look right at all. So how was he able to get the names and correspond with you, Heather, about this? Because this really looks bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Hoffman, who will be followed by Jeff Fogel. Robin, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
Hi, everybody, I want to share my condolences to our general manager, David Dillahunts. Dad died October eleventh. He was a war vet, and he died too soon. But also, what was remarkable is I had tried to contact David about a new series I'm doing, and he actually answered that morning of his dad's death, which is what I wanted to say today, is all those hidden heroes that we have here in the city. David is outstanding, he's a quiet person, he doesn't brag about his contribution to the city, but it's enormous. But I also want to say that maybe we can highlight Charlottesville Community Media Center for all those issues. We touched on things, we collaborated on Michael Payne's campaign. Senior softball series just won an award, Botanical Garden Series, Climate Action Series, even UVA Sports, we had Latinx Immigration. Sheriff Brown was on our show during COVID, telling everybody about what the Sheriff's Department was doing. We can do this, even our neighbor in Stanton, the former mayor, Adol. She was on during COVID. We zoomed her in, and she was forthcoming about what's going on in Stanton, too. Why people are not understanding too that David takes the time to work with producers, and he puts in the new shows himself, Mental Health Expert is new, Foodie Channel is new. And during Charlottesville Community Media Center's opening on a New York place, it was highlighted that we needed people with abilities to be able to do their shows. And so it is accessible, and there are applications for the people of hard of hearing. So anyway, I want to thank David very much, and and thank you for supporting Charlottesville Public Access TV. And please, if you want to tell your story, we would love to hear them. And people are remarking to me, RMC said something about me being on public access when I went to see a concert. So people are watching, and it can be more interesting. And if you do a series, it does become a story, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, so.
And yes, sending, you know, condolences and sympathies, light and love to David and his family.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Fogel, who will be followed by Gloria Beard. Jeff, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening. We actually heard somebody say in the midst of her attack on the mayor, that safety trumps the truth. That's a recipe for dictatorship. I'm sure it was quite safe in Beijing. I'm sure it was quite safe in Berlin when the Nazis were in control. But if that's the perception of our community, you're going to split us in half. You can't tolerate people who are prepared to say that we're for safety over the truth. I mean, that's unbelievable. Really, why, I also want to talk to the people so concerned about the level of shootings and attributing the reduction in shootings to the increased presence apparently of the UVA police. Several things have to be kept in mind. The truth, unfortunately for some people, crime is down an incredible amount in Charlottesville over the last 10 years. We presented that in our Just Charlottesville Task Force. The evidence is all there from the criminal justice planning officer for the Thomas Jefferson Planning District. And yet we haven't even taken account of that fact that crime is down so much. The notion that police stop crime is a fantasy. Police may catch criminals, but police don't stop crime. Chief Brackney was absolutely right when she said if there's going to be a reduction in the use of weapons or violence in the community, the answer has to come from the community. And people in the community have stepped up. And so it's more likely than any reduction in the use of weapons in the city is a result of groups like the Buck Squad, not the UVA Police Department. And so let's be smart, hopefully, about how we look at the problems that we face in the criminal justice system. We've spent decades saying, oh, just put more people in jail, hire more cops, brutality works, torture works. I mean, only the courts have stepped in to stop the police from engaging in all of those things, torture and brutality and everything else. It doesn't work. We need to be smart. We also need to look at whether we need as many officers as we needed 10 years ago if crime is down as much as it is. And if we're all looking at alternatives to policing for a whole variety of situations. So I urge the people who are worried about their neighbors, their family and others to be smart about it. Realize that police is not going to stop this. You need to support the community efforts that are making those efforts within the community to make sure that this doesn't happen. Let's be smart about criminal justice. Thank you.
And counsel can hear from up to 10 more additional people. We have two hands raised. If you'd like to get in line, please click the raise hand icon. Next up is Gloria Beard, who will be followed by Justin Reed. Gloria, you're on with counsel and you've got three minutes.
Hello, this is Gloria. I just need a question answered. I asked it before, but I didn't know if anybody understood it because I never did get an answer. Can anybody tell me what happened to Melissa Morton? I worked with, you know, the registrar for 10 years and she was really good. I mean, that's why I stayed. But then all of a sudden she was gone. She's another black person in leadership that was gone. And I'm just curious because this year I see she's not there. And I don't like to keep, you know, hearing stuff through the grapevine. I want to know the truth. So can somebody please answer that question? What happened to Melissa? I've been, I've worked with the register, like I said, for 10 years and all of a sudden she was gone. So I'm no longer working with the register because I stayed because of her. Because the people they've been putting in place now, oh, you all, y'all need to check out these people they be hiring. They are not good, very disrespectful to people of color and I'm a witness. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Justin Reed. Justin, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Hey, good evening, counsel. Mayor Walker, good evening. I just wanted to speak on the issue of policing. I'm a city resident and I'm also a new dad. I'm going to have the honor of putting my daughter to sleep each night. And I have to say that lately, I've been kind of watching the windows. I've been more mindful where I stand, you know, when I'm rocking her to sleep. You know, just a few months ago, there was a shooting, one street over from where I live. And there was a shooting, two shootings within three days. And I'm also concerned and I just want to reiterate, you know, some points that were made earlier. I do not want UVA parents determining how our neighborhoods are police. I sympathize with them, but I think, you know, they simply don't have the knowledge to be making those types of decisions that could potentially impact negatively, you know, so many lives here in the community. I was a little concerned when I heard that UVA police and leadership have met with parents. And I don't believe that UVA police have reached out to the Tenth and Page Neighborhood Association. UVA police haven't reached out to far, there are several neighborhood associations and groups that I would expect police to reach out to before they reach out to UVA parents. And to my knowledge, they haven't done so yet. And so I'm concerned that this decision was made to expand policing without having these conversations first. And I would just like to encourage counsel to ensure that that happens before anything else gets expanded to where we live.
Thank you.
All right, last call for hands for this part of the meeting. Click the raise hand icon if you'd like to speak. We have a couple of hands up. First up is Vizana Howard, who will be followed by Jenny Keller. Vizana, is it Vizina? Go ahead. You've got three minutes. Can you hear us?
Yes, hold on one second. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm just trying to get my.
Please tell me how you pronounce your first name.
It's Vizina.
Vizina, great.
Can, I'm trying to make sure I adjust it because I'm looking at the council meeting and I don't want it to echo. So.
Yep, just turn the volume down all the way on that device.
Okay. Did you just start speaking now?
You can. Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say that I am.
I think we lost you there. I'm going to pause it. Are you back? Why don't we try that again from the top?
Okay. Start now?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I'm a native of Charlottesville, Virginia. And I've been here all my life and I live on Anderson Street. And so it just bothers me to hear these calls as far as the parents talking about UVA. Because again, I've been born and raised here and the shooting has always been here. And so just to hear that now everyone wants to try to do something about the shooting because it's UVA, that bothers me and it bothers me a lot. And it bothers me that Heather Hill was so, I'm trying to get my words together, just she was just so, she was just so sympathetic for those parents. And I mean, what about the community? The black and brown community that has to hear the shootings and the babies? You know, so I just think that maybe it's not all about UVA, but what about the black and brown community who lives here? Who's been here, who's had to endure all of the violence? And I think that Nakia Walker has been doing an excellent job. And I think you guys should be praising her. And for Heather Hill not to be supportive of Nakia, that's a problem. And Lord Snook not to be supportive, that's a problem too for all of the councils. To not be supportive of the mayor, that's a problem. When they were supportive of other city officials that were doing, is doing terrible thing, they supported them. But we have a mayor who's speaking up, who's trying to make a change for the black and brown community. And no one's there to support her and rally around her. That's a problem and we need to fix that. And again, I'm sorry, but I have to go back to the UVA because where was those parents when they were having COVID parties and passing around the COVID? And the numbers were spiked up. I didn't hear any of those parents complaining then. Kids having COVID parties outside? That's it.
Thank you.
Next up is Jenny Keller. Jenny, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, members of council. I really was just watching as I generally do and I didn't have any intention of speaking tonight. But it occurred to me that I have a story I'd like to share with all of you. As you know, this is my hometown by birth as well as by choice. I've lived in another, in many other communities across the United States and in Edinburgh as well. And all of them happen to be academic communities and we all have our, all of them have various struggles and challenges as well as opportunities because of being an academic as well as a residential community. And so I just wanted to thank all of you for your varying perspectives and your commitment, your service, what you're doing for the city. Even if you have different ideas, these diversities of opinion are really important and we're not that unique. It's happening all over the country and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. And I wanted to share what had happened to me a few days ago when a colleague and I were taking advantage of the nice fall weather and working on a project together on our computers on the front porch. And one of our Charlottesville police officers came along for a routine matter and he stopped and chatted with us and and we had a very pleasant conversation and we asked him some questions about things we were wondering about and he answered them in a very professional and friendly manner. And my colleague had actually had something disturbing happen to her on her porch and she explained it to him. And he said, well, that's a peeping tom issue and it's really very serious and you should call back. And so she told me that later that evening she did and that they'd been very responsive and very helpful to her and she felt much more secure, although it was a very troubling situation to her. So I just wanted to share with you that, that things are proceeding and and that I have every confidence that we as a community will work out whatever issues we have and that all of us should, should work together to, to make sure that we can make this equitable and thriving community for everyone. So thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
We have up to six more slots. I don't see any other hands raised right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselors, any comments?
I'm sure I'll just address Ms. Turner's comments around certainly like through FOIA, the text that Mr. Brown had sent to me, certainly do not condone that language, but that process was, was not one that we discussed. I expressed my frustration that some information was made available in ways that I'm not, I have no idea where that was made available. But certainly know that those processes are things that we, we value confidentiality of, from stern to stern. And so the only comment that I did make to Mr. Brown around that process was that I felt that it was a process that went very successfully as it came to his conclusion. And so I just wanted to address that concern. And then regarding the comments of how I responded to the parents in the last meeting, I thought I was clear in that I was acknowledging that all parents and I certainly recognize the impact that mostly this has had on those who live in this community for all of their lives. As knowing someone whose, whose home was penetrated by a bullet during one of the shootings, I'm in the Tenth and Page neighborhood. It certainly has hit truly home for some people. There's many children in our West Haven community that don't feel safe playing outside at night. And that, that is not an environment that anyone should be happy with. And I agree that it's going to take more than traditional policing. We voted recently just to continue providing funding to these other, other community groups that are looking to be into these neighborhoods and making those relationships different than we know that our traditional law enforcement can. But it's never going, it's not ever going to be solved by just any one route. We're going to have to be really creative and working collaboratively to, to ensure that safety is paramount to especially our youth. Again, whether they're the youth that are here all of their lives or those that are here for four years.
Any other? So Ms. Beard's comments, there's a board for the voter registrar, so they make the decisions on hiring counsel. Or the city manager doesn't have anything to do with that. And there were some questions around even how we were notified that that person was no longer with the city. And I for one didn't know until it was brought to my attention. So just wanted to answer that. And the only other comment that I'll make is the comments around the concerns, UVA, I think I've been clear the entire time that I've been here, that safety and how people are treated overall is a, is a big deal. Countering the discussion, the point centered around UVA students over the concerns of the community, I wouldn't call those hostile militias, you know, whatever was said. I didn't go back and listen to that previous meeting, but my recollection of that meeting was that it was centered around the chief, Chief Brackney not working towards making changes. And that now since there was new leadership in place and their partnership, that that was somehow the reason that we had arrived at this point of fewer shots fired. And I think that's what I addressed in the last point. And of course, always concerned about UVA being the center focus for any other changes that we need in the community. And to understand that you would have to do a significant amount of research to under, to understand where native people would be coming from, who have been pushed out of their homes, who have worked, had to work in low wage jobs and not be considered really considered at all in a lot of things, but to be of service. And though to the university and their students without taking into consideration the needs and the care and concern of the community. And so anytime that I speak of UVA and when I talk to them, that is the direction that I am making my comments in. Other community members who heard that are coming from that same space. There has been no one that I've heard from that says, let the shooting and violence continue. And the holistic viewpoint of how you curb violence, you have to also acknowledge the humanity of everyone involved and figure out what the needs of those are in the community. Or people who may be perpetuating violence and potential future. And that should have been my comments, even though I haven't gone back and, and listened to them. So whether I was in this position or not, it's always been a, you know, concern of mine and I would ask the speaker to go back and listen to their comments and how they framed it. And that might give them some insight on the reaction that was received. And as far as any of the changes in city government that has happened to them since then, there is a pretty long record on the community and there are people on, have various opinions of, of those matters. But the information is out there. And and I just think that'll be, you know, my last comment, as I've said throughout the entire time I've been on council, that to resolve these issues, there's been a lot of discussion about there's an increase of shooting all around the country, which I try to. Which I try to focus on Charlottesville and make sure that we are, you know, like just really zoning in on like what are our issues? But the level of poverty in this system and everything that poverty creates is something that we are going to have these type of episodes until we figure it out. As one of the speakers said, unfortunately, this is something that we have held to deal with. A significant amount of especially black men who have been killed in this community. Since I've been aware that people, you know, die. And you know, that's pretty significant, and where people place the blame of that is again, something that we could debate about for hours, but if you're truly going to resolve it, then you're going to have to look at a holistic. And we've seen in all the discussions across the country at every level of government, that increasing jails and prisons and population, that's what happens when you over police an area. And if that is not our desire, we're going to have to come up with other solutions than over policing.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. I fully agree.
Any other comments? All right. We're set for a break, but I think we can probably get to through some, at least the next discussion before the 8:00 PM break time. So everybody's good with continuing. All right. So next up, we have a action item, public hearing resolution. Amending the fiscal year 2122 substantial action plan and appropriating the home American Rescue Plan funding is the first of two readings. Ms. Attac?
So tonight's public hearing has one goal. It's to serve as a forum for public comment for the fiscal year 2122 annual action plan. Opportunity Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program for the special allocation of the Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan, the Home ARP from HUD. Similar to the CDBGC funding, this is a separate set of funding from the regular annual home funding entitlement award that the city receives every year, made available from the American Rescue Plan 2021. This funding is aimed at providing housing services and shelters and shelters to individuals experiencing homelessness and other vulnerable populations. Given the immediate needs faced by Charlottesville, HUD announced a allocation of $2,452,270 to the city of Charlottesville. Funds are available for expenditure up to 2030. These funds can be used for up to four eligible activities, including the production or preservation of the affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, including homelessness prevention services and other housing counseling, and the purchase or development of non-congregative shelter for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Under the cooperation agreements of the Home Investment Partnership Program, the TJPDC members and the city of Charlottesville will consult with homelessness service providers, domestic violence organizations, public housing organizations, and other organizations and agencies in the city of Charlottesville and in the region before undertaking any activities using Home ARP funding, and will come back to city council with a list of final activities for approval. Members of the consortium must agree to cooperate and to undertake or assist in undertaking housing assistance activities for the Home ARP program. And per the cooperation agreement, excuse me. Members have to agree to affirmatively further fair housing activities within the consortium. Once again, staff will ask that city council review and approve the Home ARP project list once the Home Consortium members have reviewed all project recommendations. And I'm available for any questions that the council might have.
And how long would that process be?
The planning process?
Yeah, the exploring options, and then, I guess, debating them amongst the, before they will be presented to us.
So we're actually starting that this Wednesday. But I will get back to you on that.
Counselors, any other questions before we open it up for a public hearing?
All right, I'm just interested in the same data, when start to finish.
All right, Mr. Wilmer, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience, you'd like to address counsel during this public hearing, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. And I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion, counselors? All right.
Just move to the consent agenda for the second reading.
Mr. Cullinan, were you chiming in here?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So yeah. This is on the moving forward to the November 1st consent agenda.
Perfect, thank you.
Right. And if you have an update, then you'll give it to us in terms of what you think the timeframe might be.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. You all want to, you're good to go to keep going. All right. Next up, we have resolution appropriating American Rescue Plan funds, $1,192,836. This is the first of two readings.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Chris Cullinan, the city's director of finance. The item you have under your consideration is a resolution for appropriation from the American Rescue Plan. This is actually the second appropriation from the city's first tranche of funds that it received back in May. As you recall, the city received about $9.8 million in its first tranche, and it's scheduled to receive another 9.8 in May of next year. Back in July, council appropriated just a little less than $2 million to address urgent community organizational needs arising from the impacts of COVID as we go along through the summer months. And COVID continues to impact our community, we continue to evaluate those needs of the community and of the organization. And this evening, you've got a total of seven requests that address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency and support the public health response. All of these requests are eligible under the ARP guidelines. I'm not going to go through each one individually. However, I am joined this evening by a number of my colleagues and subject matter experts in each one of these different areas. Should you have any questions about any of these specific items? With that, I'll conclude my presentation. We'll just to comment that should council approve this appropriation in this dollar amount, there will be about 6.6 million ARP funding remaining from that first tranche. And so with that, if you have an answer, any questions you might have, along with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the timeframe by which, you know, this council or the future council will be looking at that additional, the rest of this tranche? Where to allocate this one? I think we're waiting for the end of year kind of reporting.
Correct. I guess I would describe it as you know, these funds are intended to get us through May of next year in terms of that first tranche. We have until December 31st of 2024 to spend the entirety of it. As you referenced, one of the eligible uses under ARP is for revenue replacement. In the event we had our revenues impacted by COVID, and you're correct, we're currently finishing the audit and determining where we ended up and whether ARP funds might be appropriate. Also, as we continue to live with COVID, I think if one thing that there's one lesson that we've learned, it continues to evolve over time, and we have to our response continues to evolve. And so we're reviewing requests on a rolling basis. And as those become apparent to us, or as they become some level of urgency, we're going to be bringing those back to you all for your consideration, for your appropriation.
Okay. And I do have some questions around the we gave this out of the CARES funding early on, and that the amount of that bonus was staff, we, you know, debated about that. And I think at the time, there was a line, attempt to align it with the, with the county was doing for its employees at the time. But I would like for us to strongly consider if we have this money sitting there, we still have some money from the CARES, right?
The CARES funds have been completely
Okay, so what do we have, like the additional, there's another 6 million reserves, right, from?
So there is, as I mentioned, with the first appropriation with this one, there would be 6.6 million left from our first tranche of American Rescue Plan funds. And if I could for a moment, one of the eligible uses under ARP is for what they call premium pay. And when we initially surveyed city departments as to their requests, their needs, a handful of departments did put forward what I would call compensation requests. They're all slightly different, some variations of those, but premium pay is what's allowed by the American Rescue Plan. And so the guidance that I was given from the city manager back in July was that he was interested in pursuing that. But it had to be done in a holistic way, looking across the city, at all possible eligible departments and all possible eligible employees, not just those who made requests for those, and all had to be equitable. The Rescue Plan guidelines prioritize low-income workers. And then also equity from the standpoint of people's proportionate risk contracting COVID. And that's really the litmus test under ARP is that there has to be a nexus between what you are doing and your risk to COVID. And so accordingly, folks who telework are not eligible to receive those funds. And so that's, so since July, in lieu of not having a human resources director nor a classification or compensation analyst, I've volunteered to try to spearhead this. And one of the challenges that we're facing is that we're still working under the interim final rules from US Treasury. And we were told they were going to come in August, September, we're now in October. We still haven't received those final rules. And so we have some broad guidelines around which to work, but there's some nuances and some things that are unique to our organization that were unclear as to how we're going to handle those. There have also been relatively few communities that have actually implemented premium pay. Many of them are interested, but few have actually put something forward, so we have some idea of what other communities are doing. And so I say all that to just emphasize that it is a priority. It's been so since we received our first tranche. It's been communicated to department heads that this is something that we want to do, we're looking at around those requirements of ARP as well as the guidance of being holistic and being equitable. And so we're continuing to work on these things. We actually just today received something from listserv of other finance and budget folks from around the Commonwealth. Get a little bit understanding of what some other folks are doing. So we do have the fund still available. As I mentioned, we have 6.6 million left. And as we go forward, again, we hope we get some further guidance around what we're allowed to do, what degree of discretion we have, how creative can we get in terms of allocating that to our employees who were at risk during this time of COVID.
So could you describe what, how they are defining premium pay?
That's actually one of the items that's a little unclear as to what they mean. They do talk about a dollar amount of that the premium pay cannot exceed more than $13 more per hour than what they're actually receiving. You noted in the consent agenda, the agenda item for the sheriff's office, you saw that reference. That was there for a reason that's called out in the guidelines. And so it's a bit unclear as to what they mean. I think most, most of what I've read is around the concept of a bonus. I think that, and you see that again, using the sheriff's appropriation as an example, the Commonwealth went that route. And so from what I've seen, that seems to be the most common interpretation of what premium pay looks like. And I think part of that is also the idea that these are one-time funds, even though we're getting them in two tranches. That these are one-time funds and shouldn't be used for ongoing salary increases or other things which could be fiscally difficult to sustain in the long run.
So it's if we have a end-of-the-year surplus, which that is looking like it's possible, and I know there are other factors, you know, other things, items that we want to consider, but it would be possible that if things are not, that we could prepare for this, and if things are not covered or certain employees are not covered by the American Rescue Plan, that we can at least have a dollar amount of what wouldn't be covered by that plan to consider it coming out of that, those one-time dollars.
Possibly. I'll say at this point, in terms of where we are with the audit at the year end, I'll be honest, it's going to be close. We're still, you know, several adjustments we have to make, but based on what I've seen so far, it's going to, it's going to be close. But to your point about you know, how we can compensate the workforce, as you, as you mentioned, under CARES, everyone who works for the city receives some form of a bonus, even though CARES only paid for the public safety pieces of that. The rest of it, we made up through the general fund or wherever folks were, whichever fund that folks were employed in. Quite frankly, that was a risky move because of the time we were in the, at the beginning of fiscal year with COVID. But it looks like that, you know, revenues rebounded sufficiently in the last quarter of fiscal year to cover that. And so we were able to back that play, so to speak. Going forward, you know, that is, we could, we could adopt a similar strategy to figure out, you know, who's eligible under ARP. I would say that the number and category of employees is larger than that of the CARES Act. So I guess that's the good news, but I think it's also, of the guidance that I've seen, it's pretty clear that you can't or it would be very heavily scrutinized and audited if we were to suddenly declare all employees of the city eligible under the American Rescue Plan. To be very clear, it's not your eligibility for ARP had to be relative to your potential risk of COVID. So again, as I mentioned, anybody who's telecommuting isn't covered by that. Simply working for the city during COVID doesn't qualify you for that. But as we did under CARES, we could do something where some segment of employees are covered by ARP, those employees who are not are covered through another source. So
And then there were levels also, so not everyone got, received the same.
Correct. And that's, and frankly, that's one of the things with, with the ARP money in terms of that proportionality that I'm particularly interested in, because for some of our workforce, it's very straightforward. Public safety, public utilities, I'm trying to leave some other folks out, but they were, but they never went home. They were still working 24 hours a day, seven days a week during COVID. In the finance department, for example, the vast majority of my folks were teleworking, continued to telework. But I did have a few employees who had come in, say, once per, one time per week to go out in the community or to do something in the office. And so my question, when I put on my Director of Finance Department head hat, is clearly, it doesn't rise to the level of a police officer, a firefighter who was doing that the majority of their job, but they were doing it 20% of the time. So would they be eligible potentially 20% of whatever, whatever that amount is? That's not clear in the guidance as to how, how we do that, or if that's allowable, is it all or nothing? And so those are some of the finer points that we kind of have to work through. Those are some of the, the finer points that we kind of have to work through. But again, if we want to be equitable and recognize the efforts of all employees, whether it was. You know, their job full-time or just some of the time while they were working, we want to make sure we get it right. And make sure that it's proportionate.
Well, I would hope that we would start with the individuals and those departments who. Couldn't go home, can't work from home and then, of course. There are stories that we've heard, some of those from individuals who could work from home but still had to leave home. Like the example that you just gave at some point. And when this first started, no one knew. What and when you were at risk and we were still trying to get like ventilation and all of those things, so at any point it could, it was a risk to people, whether they had to come out. One day or five or seven, but there was more risk and I think everyone understands that. But especially the people that could not stay home. Or work from home and had no, you know, though, did not have the safety and comfort of being able to and still don't. I would hope that the rest of the organization understands that, you know, prioritizing them, but at the same time doing any work. Doing this very challenging time in history. I think people deserve. To have their contributions to the city government and upholding it. Honored if, you know, through a bonus, even if it's not, you know. Equal to what those individuals who put themselves on the line. And if we explain that. May, then, you know, not everyone might agree, but I think just explaining that and how we arrived at the point we arrived at will go a long way.
I just had another question, um. I'm pretty sure you know the answer, but the COVID testing for the employees, that's the proactive testing for people who aren't vaccinated, it doesn't include it if an employee were to have any kind of symptom. Getting tested, is that right?
It includes both, the vast majority of it is for unvaccinated employees, but it's my understanding in a way, the. Contract and the hours are going to be constructed, there is going to be maybe an hour per day. Or per week for employees who may be symptomatic to come in and get tested, so it's going to be. The majority of it's for unvaccinated, but there is going to be the walk-in opportunity, Ms. Marshall, I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that.
Yes, Counselor Hill, that is correct, what my colleague just said. And when we have that hour, the reason why it is segregated is to ensure that individuals who are already facing symptoms. Have an opportunity to test safely and those who are not. Actually facing symptoms have a separate opportunity to safely test. And so that space will be open, not only for individuals who are unvaccinated, but also for our vaccinated team members as well, should they for whatever reason present. With symptoms and they need to check, so that time will be available for both sets of, of team members, no matter your vaccination status.
Thank you. I just know in the school system and I know it's because there's a lot of young children involved who none of them can be vaccinated yet, but there's, they've gotten funding to be able to do this, that's not coming from the local dollars, so just disappointed that we can't. Fall into those categories, because this is a chunk here for that, but thank you for answering the question.
My other comment about the current allocations would just be to. Like the ambassador program. That's a contracted program and if we're using. You know, staff for a long periods of time, I've just said, you know, before to make sure that. If they're going to be a part of the organization that, you know, they have the, especially in a risky, they are coming in contact with people, I know that we talked about them being in the, you know. Whatever that box thing is outside or wherever they are now, but wanting to make sure they have access to benefits and insurance and all of that stuff, so if it becomes where this person is going to be. On staff longer term, this is now the second. You know, allocation to that, that we just consider. Whether those, you know, whether there's a space for those employees, not through like, you know, this contracted meetings. And the last thing that I want to bring up is just the. Last year, we dedicated a lot of money to housing and we made sure that the community knew through advertisement. That the Human Services Pathway Funds. Were there and that there were these dollars for these different pockets of housing needs. And this, you know, this time we're doing that. You know, differently and I just would like for us to consider whether. Just making, one, we need to make sure that the pathway fund is sufficiently. Funded, but it's also very different than having these pockets than if you advertise for like the housing. Needs that we helped with last year and in terms of re-entry. With the number of people who are supposed to be released and the superintendent talked about. You know, some law, legal changes that recently occurred that there will be more people up for release. From even our local jail, but I know that it's also happening at state and federal level. That we would consider a re-entry pot of housing funds. Again, I think we should consider all of them again. But definitely want to make sure that people know that. Those dollars exist and that staff is not looking at it as if there is limit, limited funding. And I know that there is limited funding, but I think if we put more in there, they, they, you know, more people will have access to and the need. And that the need is there.
Couple of questions. The first on the. $500,000 for testing. Obviously, that's just a need, something we have to do, but just curious if that is, is the, is the $500,000? For like a contract to do it or is it going to be? Just based on how many people are needing to come in for tests, both because they're either unvaccinated or having symptoms and want to get tested. Basically, like, do we know if that will be the actual dollar amount or could it be lower or higher than $500,000 to have those testing services?
That's an estimate based on the cost per hour for the. The nurses are going to be staffing at the cost per test and approximately we're. We're estimating about 250 employees per week, we're going to need testing now. Obviously, one of the things we hope is that number goes down, that people get vaccinated and as they do that, those dollars get stretched further, so. It's an estimate at best and like, as, as it mentioned, for about six months worth of time. At that point, we're also hopefully have the emergency regulations from OSHA. For employers of more than 500 people as to exactly what those regulations look like and if we need to make any adjustments to our, our testing plan.
Yeah, well, yeah, obviously, it's just another reason why it's important to get vaccinated. Your own safety, safety of others you're working with, but could also, you know, allow us to invest more in the pathways fund, housing, other priorities. The four, I know it's in the packet, but even just at a high level, what are some of the, like, the, the changes anticipated for that $400,000? For city facilities in terms of what kind of impacts that's expected to happen, happen on the community and what's happening with that investment?
Absolutely, Counselor Payne, so the $400,000 to redo a vacant space in the Market Street Garage. Will actually house three separate programs that are all community facing. So it will be our Office of Human Rights, we're currently there carrying about eight cases, many of them being housing related. Our Home to Hope Team, who right now each advocate is working with about 40 clients alone. And also our Economic Development's Job Center. The reason for this proposed change is because especially with the Job Center and Home to Hope currently being co-located. In city, city space along with our housing team and anyone who is utilizing that space. They actually don't have walls that go all the way up to the ceiling and they don't have doors. So not only is there a lack of privacy for the community members that both of those programs are serving, but there's also a lack of safety. For our peers and our job center professionals, just because kind of anybody is walking in and anyone is, is walking out at any time. And so it will provide not only COVID safety for those teams. But it also will provide a safe space for the individuals who they are working with to come to be able to have counsel and assistance. In a private room, which also many of the individuals who those teams would be working with. May have higher risk for COVID complications, as well as many of them may still be uncomfortable becoming vaccinated. And so that was the idea to propose that change and one of the great things that. Our team did here because it was designed by Scott Hendricks, who's one of our facilities team members. Is that it's flexible space, so let's say three years from now, we maybe. Need to move those programs somewhere else because they've grown larger and allow another program to come in there, it is made for that, so. It is space that could be used again, even though this is one-time funding to keep those team members safe for COVID. If in the future we do need to reconfigure, it is made to be malleable in that way.
Thank you. Guess the last comment I would have is, I'm definitely curious. How as a council together with the city manager's office and staff, we can start thinking through with both the remaining money. In the first tranche as well as the second tranche, how to sort of. Brainstorm. What we could spend that money on and prioritize it. And we definitely echo the mayor's point that I really hope we can try to prioritize spending that on. Programs and investments that are directly going to and benefiting the community. Like we really tried to do with CARES money in terms of housing homelessness prevention, food security, the pathways fund. As well as investments to help people. Recover economically from the pandemic, which is obviously going to have impacts that are going to last years and years. Because I know there's still a lot of money remaining, you know, both in this first and second tranche and just how we can hit the ground running, planning how we're going to spend it and definitely staff. Bonuses and support, you know, can be a part of that and then it's outside of this, but it just called to mind the. The importance of our long overdue compensation study, looking throughout the whole organization that our, our compensations and discrepancies and pay. But yeah, I, I hope we're able to do that and just because it, there's so many opportunities with that money for, for housing, community support.
The only question I had is I just wondered whether you have any sort of early reports or early inklings of what. What might be coming down the pike, say, three months from now, four months, five, six months from now, about other ways we might be asked to, to allocate some of this money, anything you're working on?
I think, I think the two big ones that were, we've got placeholders, for lack of a better term, as I mentioned before. Possible revenue replacement for any lost revenues from COVID, then the premium pay, those will, you know, be.
Okay.
You know, high six-figure, possibly seven-figure type of, of asks. But other than that, I think it's. Simply that, you know, COVID keeps changing and evolving and our response keeps changing and evolving and so we're trying to. You know, with my colleagues who are subject matter experts in these various areas, both of the, you know, within the organization, but the community. That we're, we're being vigilant and seeing how those needs are evolving and make sure we're, we're reacting. As quickly as we can and getting the financial resources to, to combat the virus.
Any sense that, okay, three months from now, we're coming back with the next, with the next idea?
Um, at, at this point, I don't have a timeline.
Okay.
We, we will be, you know, finishing the year-end results before the end of the calendar year. I would think that would probably be the next time we might come back with something, but that's not to say that if an immediate need presented itself a week from now. That we wouldn't mobilize and, and get something in front of you so that we could get those resources out there.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'd just like to advocate for if there's a bonus and if we can get that information together before the end of the year that. And before the holidays, then I think that would be helpful, so. Unless there's a reason that we can't do it. I just want to put that out there. All right, any other? Yeah, I did have one more question with the emergency personnel, both fire. And police and both former chief and current chief of those positions. Were advocating when the changes were made and. The holiday. Schedule how, whether they can take time off, losing days. And I know that was something that has come up, that I don't know where we are at in that process. But I've mentioned several times in the CM discussions, if we can find out. If that's something that we're waiting for. HR to look at, but it's one of those things where both of those. The employees in those departments and the former Chief Brackney and Chief Smith have been advocating. For at a minimum for the employees not to lose their time, but there has been the difference in between how they were previously. Compensated for that time before the changes was made with the, under. The previous city manager leadership and so if we can look at that again. And if it has to wait for an HR, I just think it would be helpful for those employees based on their concerns about. You know, losing time and being understaffed and not being able to take time off, that's contributing to, I think, some of the morale issues there, that that would be helpful for us to have some. Some answers to. Okay, so any other comments? Okay, all right, so this is moving forward to the November 1st consent agenda. Right, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll just keep going. All right, so the next we have, it's a written report only for Rivanna Authority's quarterly report, were there any comments or questions on that report? Counselors, so you're fine there, all right. Any other business items for consideration?
Mayor Walker, could we go back just a second to the Rivanna issue? There was a question that was posed to us by email. By DeeDee Smith and I, I asked the Rivanna folks for an answer and I thought I'd pass that on at this point, if that's okay?
Okay.
The question was basically where is the, the Central Water Pipe Project likely to run? But we know that between 2023 and 2027. The Rivanna Water Sewer Authority is projecting that they will do a, a replacement of the Central Water Pipe. That basically runs from the Observatory Water Treatment Plant, really right all through Charlottesville. And although they don't have the exact route indicated at this point. They, they say that the Central Water Pipe Project will extend. From the Observatory Water Treatment Plant along a route which may include, note, there's some variation possible here. Stadium Road, JPA Extended, Cleveland Avenue, Cherry Avenue, Elliott Avenue, Sixth Street. Tenth or Eleventh Street and East High Street to the intersection with Long Street. The design engineering consultant is currently completing detailed surveys. Of existing surface conditions and underground utilities to try to assess any conflicts and to finalize the route. They expect the route to be finalized in the next 12 to 18 months. Construction of the pipeline to start in 2024. Would take two or three years to complete the full five miles, that's not to say the full five miles would be dug up for two to three years. They would do a short section and then fill it in, do a next short section, fill it in and so on. But it should take two to three years to complete and so that. But it should take two to three years to complete. And so that, I think that answer is the question that Ms. Smith had posed.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments there? All right. Any other items or business items for consideration? All right, any questions? For future follow-up? From CM or does he? All right, Mr. Willer, turn it back over to you for this second matters by the public.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you'd like to get in line to address council, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. We have thirty-eight people in the audience, three hands raised right now. First up is Katrina Turner, who'll be followed by Greg Weaver. Katrina, you're back on with council and you've got three minutes. Katrina, can you hear us? She had her hand up earlier, so I'm gonna come back to her. Katrina, if you want to raise your hand again, please do. Next up is Greg Weaver, who'll be followed by Catherine Lawn. Greg, you're on with council and you've got three minutes.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Hi, City Council, this is Greg Weaver, Lynn Fry Spring. At the Planning Commission meeting last week, I made a comment about how not understanding the necessity of increased density in light of climate change is climate denialism. And I urged you all and everyone to reckon with consequences of that nihilism. There are those that argue, however, that density means more cars, more traffic, and an increase in emissions. I earnestly understand why that would be someone's gut reaction, and I think providing some facts might help dispel that way of thinking, just in case those sorts of comments have struck a chord with you and others. Folks here dense city and they think New York City or similar. And when they think New York City, they think extreme traffic and vehicle emissions. It may be a little funny to compare Charlottesville to a megopolis, but let's consider New York City. First, it's not built for cars. In twenty nineteen, forty-six percent of New Yorkers didn't even own a car. That's three point eight seven million people. Compare that to a whopping six percent of Charlottesville residents who don't own a car. That's two thousand eight hundred twenty-six people. In fact, forty-one percent of households here own two cars. If you live here, you know that you can't get around easily without a car. That's why our transportation emissions per capita is higher than New York City's. Even considering New York's nightmare commuter traffic. Here are twenty sixteen numbers. Total emissions per capita, Charlottesville, eight mid, eight metric tons, New York, six point five. Transportation emissions per capita, Charlottesville, two point two five metric tons, New York, one point eight five. Traffic does not equal emissions. More abstractly. People always exist somewhere. It's where they exist in relation to necessities and amenities based on the infrastructure of where they exist. That determines how they get from place to place, which will determine transportation emissions. Traffic caused by density isn't inevitable. If we transform our city around mass transit, walking and biking, and we must. And people change their transportation habits, and we must. Those that need take a trip in their car need not be so concerned in a denser Charlottesville. Climate denialism remains the refusal to believe that mitigating disaster doesn't require a complete transformation in the ways we live. Here in Charlottesville, addressing the climate crisis and starting that transformation, starts with density and transit. I'm happy to provide my sources if you request them of me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Catherine Lawn. Catherine, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Great, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to speak briefly on, on two things. One, in response to the UVA mothers who are calling in about safety. I'm not a UVA mother, but I am a mother. I'm a UVA professor and I live extremely close to the university. My kids are out and about in town, and I just want to say that as a, as a mother and as an expert in violence, I don't feel like increased police presence. Is going to make my kids or my family any safer. And it certainly isn't going to make our, the rest of our city safer. But I, I really wanted to speak about the proposal that. Was made public today from the Jefferson School about the Lee statue. I know it's not on your agenda now. But reading about this proposal is just so exciting. I wanted to, to make a public comment to say that I think we have this opportunity to do something. So beautiful and transformational to have a, two national experts. Dr. Douglas and Dr. Schmidt lead a process to do something really novel. And meaningful with the Lee statue. And so I hope this proposal receives consideration and is the ultimate. Choice for handling the Lee statue. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to get in line, please click the raise hand icon. Next up is Ange Khan. Ange, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. So I haven't been on, I briefly joined in the meeting. But I'm now joining at the tail end of it. So I'm not sure if this was addressed, but I'm wondering. About the elephant in the room. It appears as though folks are just dismissing. The fact that we actually had a. A whole, I'm looking for the word. Conspiracy take place within council and no one is addressing it head-on. We had a city manager who actually collaborated with a police believe it's association. I, I, I just don't understand why everyone is so silent on this topic. You know, that's a very serious. You know, that is, that's a, that's a very serious thing. I do want to address other folks on council who stood by. And not said anything, even though there were, there was plenty of. Evidence that there was. You know, there was some collaboration there. And lastly, I do have a question, and I think it will be for Michael Payne. My question is. I noticed that in one of the conversations, I try to look back, I just don't have enough time in the day to do that, but. I, I wanted to, I wanted to ask your rationale for asking a policing institution. To keep the same reforms that were in place that caused the firing of. The chief and then also. How you think that those reforms are going to be in place? Like, how are they going to remain in place when clearly by the? The. Surveys that were taken, none of the current officers on the force want that. When they, when they clearly want to continue policing as is. They continues, they continue, they want to harm the community. I, I just don't understand as a socialist, you, why would you think anything different? So I would, I would want a response to that question.
Thank you.
As I can try to provide a response. There's obviously no easy answer or solution there. I mean, in part, my thinking is. You know, listing out reforms that have been made over the past few years in specifics. Things like the police department's relationship with Jade. Goals of updating. Procedures and policies in terms of discipline and accountability of officers. The strategy for how like protests are engaged with. And both in whoever is, you know, in the role of interim and permanent police chief. Outlining those things are clear directive from council that absolutely must be maintained and happen, having a civilian police review board. That is empowered and functional as an institutional mechanism to try to create accountability for the department and ensure that reforms continue forward. All the policies from the two criminal justice reform working groups, listing those out, you know, having what the budget amount is to implement those and in our upcoming budget process. Outlining what the budget amount and staff resources are needed to make those proposals happen and develop a plan to try to. Get those to fruition and move from just suggestions into reality. But I mean, there's no question it's going to be difficult, and I think it is accurate that one of the tensions I, you know. Anticipate that will continue to be is that, you know, there's going to be tensions from officers who don't want to see reform happen. So. Anyway, that's a partial response, but I don't have an easy or complete answer by any means.
Our next speaker is Katrina Turner. Katrina, you're back on with council. You've got three minutes.
Yes, I'd like, I. Who supported Chip Boyle. About there.
We're having a little trouble hearing you, Katrina.
Okay, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um, I just wanted to, okay, I just wanted to say, you know, ask the council member that. Supported Chip Boyle, how they feel now, because he did not even show his face tonight. After he accused the mayor and community members. For the reason of him quitting. Now, he's the one that got caught up with the PBA. He's the one that was recorded by the PBA. So I'd like to know. If you all support him, then you all feel too that it was the community members and the mayor. Who made this man quit and not the PBA who recorded him. So. I just want to know. Now about your support. About Chip Boyle, because he knew. He was wrong, or else he would never have resigned. So I would like to know your, your all's answer. To how you support him now? That he has quit this job because of everything that was found out about him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Hoffman. Robin, you're back on with council. You've got three minutes.
I just heard that story about the budget for the vaccines. I just want to encourage people to get their vaccines. I'm a vaccinator. I had to come back and be a vaccinator. For the last two weeks because people did not get their vaccine. It's very clear. The data shows that those who are vaccinated don't have to get severe COVID. There are people that will get severe COVID because they have pre-morbidities. But the first thing that people sit down next to me and say is, why aren't people getting vaccinated? And I can tell you that I'm a nurse for forty-five years. And every vaccine that was ever out there, I took because not only didn't I want to get. Measles, mumps, rubella, pola, small, smallpox, you name it. I didn't want to give it to anybody, and I'm sixty-five years old. Nothing happened to me. But this vaccine is a state-of-the-art vaccine and the UVA data school. You can visit them, you can get online with them, they will tell you the facts. So if you are in the public, if you are a police officer or any person that is helping somebody else. Face to face and you're supposed to do CPR or whatever, you have to get vaccinated, just like I had to get vaccinated all my life. So that I would protect not only myself, but others. And that's a fact. There's no choice about it. And so if you're not going to do that job, which entails doing CPR, then you cannot do that job. And I don't know where it happened that all of a sudden people are talking about freedom of speech. It has nothing to do with this disease. In fact, the people that dismantled the CDC and the FDA during Trump's reign, I hate to say, and before that even. You know, the, the agency did not protect us when the people came out in February of twenty twenty on these ships. For the Carnival cruises and they just let these COVID sick people go from every single state in this country. Now. Just remember, if we all get vaccinated and we all wear masks by twenty twenty-two, we don't, we can be out, we can be free. And so, but again, if you are a public servant, you have to get vaccinated or don't do the job. And that's my final take on that. Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no new hands. Ange Khan has raised her hand again.
Okay, it's just one time per person. Or any comments? All right. So meet in adjournment. Thank you.